As far as I know, we are not muted.
Hello. Mayor, just to let you know that the audio is coming through very garbled. I'm sorry? Yes.
All right, so for those who didn't hear on the Zoom that the role was called and all of the other persons in the mayor here. All right, the first item in this call would comment about your residents, business owners, and property owners are invited to speak to the council items that are not on tonight's agenda but are working to see if we correctly open. Great for the audience wishing to see an item. So, see anyone, is there anyone on the Zoom wishing to speak to an item?
I would. Thank you. Just wanted to take a moment to thank the council for the honor that was presented to me last week. It was a wonderful presentation. And the fact that you can't get rid of me now, I'm on the side of the building, so. Anyway, but again, thank you. I was extremely honored to have that recognition.
Thank you. Thanks for all looking at it. I'll make this part of reality. All right. Anyone else who speaks in public time? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please? We've all been doing missions or something. Like a lot of donating consent agenda, but it's pretending. Uh, the page is the business of our last meeting, approval of the council made a warrant, file a claim. Uh, we're trying to make objection, we will consider these. We're going to objection forward. Good number of items to do business. First item tonight is the presentation on the 2020 financial audit, and I am going to turn it over to the board.
Thank you. Thank you for having me on today. Still here, that's all right. Really just have a very brief audit results summary to share with you based on the 2020 model. Uh, we've completed this, so I'm taking along, I'm representing CLA, your life partner. Uh, my role there is a public principal in the lobby office, so I hold all the responsibility for the audit as a view of all. Our staff can see alongside your team, be able to bring the loss both. Our first year as your auditors, so I did just to get a little summary of the audit call. In a lot of our videos, we're going to share a lot. So for those on Zoom, I'll be sure to read through the information I have here. I'm really just a very short agenda to walk through. In the first key, you know, the background of us, our experience in the audit world. Uh, walk through the financial audit results. We're looking forward to. Uh, just little basic background on CLA as your partner. Uh, this is very much our brand and our work. Worked over five hundred municipalities across state, A P dinner, so patients, that's really all my background. The way we perform, we're really trying to do three man ones of best practices between other municipalities, your size. Alongside. And then just with a little bit more background, um, if people were to sell as well like a bar or some. Even a little bit. Very good condition. Very, this sort of stable, you're going to go to your herd also very much focused by state local governments and uh, for us. Did you want to bring in the board a little bit of high level summary on getting to state? Um, I won't get into the details on the numbers and all the detail that. But I just want to highlight a few things. Firstly, to be a. Uh, that is on a modified community economy. Let the highest level sharing, we can provide you with a lot of financials. Apparently, our team are appropriate. That's a good thing from a, from a overall end result perspective. Even in our report, we also issued. What she did through the model results and the specifics of the relates for that, if there were new upcoming. I mean, the links related to 2020 that affected your review of that report, we make those more to use. There are differences. Uh, 2020 did not have any those. Also, as it relates to preparing that financial information. There, there is a number of. To the provision, so again, over looking at this, if you're a worker, you'd be able to consider what we expect is. Before we see other allies that is. Yeah, your reporting requirements, uh, required, we had no, can you use or more modifications, yes. Normally, we don't know particularly sensitive to the board or anything where you're sort of all on a limb. How to choose something or reports, okay, very consistent with what we expect, industry. Um, the line that we do roll within the government slider, that's a little bit, uh, you need to, uh, 2020 is just. Fact that here we are in August of twenty two. So, I think we're hired late in 2021. As your auditors, uh, you work with your advantage, our advice, I don't mind you. Have the vision to be on and to be able to. And really in receiving that kind of those organization. So, you know, that we look forward into future audits, seeing when we try to, uh, spread this out. Work with your team as to whatever. Long side of that. I didn't want, I want like the, the last bullet point in here is related to misstatements and we know that we had no under. What that means is. I mean, some information that we did receive was appropriately stated, we didn't have direct. Uh, we were simply able to test that information to that accuracy, but it was important that I have. Could be able to prepare that same model, so there was. Uh, no disagreements in, in relation to how we see something that has been done. Uh, also, for others, maybe. People ask as well as you that we're coming to say. Finally, we talked through, uh, this better mention of best practice type recommendations. Uh, we did just touch on this in the government slider as well. Uh, but overall, the timing has been broken down. Uh, readings, most. We have some recommendations that relates to that, that relates to segregation duties. Yeah, we do have a pretty small setup here as it is, uh, but yeah, true. Here's the well, and we got multiple people trying to cover all of those duties, probably making it even more difficult to have. There's no one that's going to know him. Um, you know, as we continue to. So, in that population, uh, segregation duties, uh, would be, there is some, you can change that. And together. The, 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 the whole, if you, you know, when you talk about the current environments and the things that we are anticipating. That listed a number of challenges that are out, which is probably more. Prices that you during your personal life were in useful, I have here. Yeah, and are trying to create a way to, so it's not a mission. Uh, and I always need the initial grant coming that has been available to, uh, to municipalities. We're making sure that during the financial period of state I was. And those hours are received and then really, uh, the. We, I think through, uh, from one hour to future plans, know that we're going to, you know. But, uh, look to your, to your end, see when you have a. Now finally, there are some recording standards that are coming up. Uh, we've got one year before they're, before they're doing their reporting, so, uh. Really not anything to, uh, to address there today, but to be aware that as new standards, um, work together with that continues to be. So that takes me through how to elaborate. But on that, here the topic too, there's a. Uh, hopefully, it's a lower than the point for what we believe is the part, that's really the goal last and in. Really, the detail work now and then. Question whether there's, well, we have enough, we have a full set. Where should I go? I'd say, um. I think you'll be, you'll be to the point where we would have time. It would always, you know, additional, you could go there, give best practice here and there, but I don't think it would be a great time for. Uh. That. But it would be a fact that, um, who, who you. Stay right there. That. Come out of there and be to work on more. All of these. Uh, some question test, uh, what is the timeline for that? So, so you already, the legal, the legal has already started the. We have not started any monitor sequence related to 2020. Old process, 2021. I know if you're very, 2020, but the situation would have come to any kind of conflict that would be needed for 2021 purposes as well. Uh, so that will be something that you can, that your team might wear to.
One of them is trying to get it faster. We're giving that to moderate the time table and it's not. It's going to be dish finals here, getting actually, yeah, on track to getting back to the.
Oh, oh, that was very hard fire than you do the mask. By December.
So where?
Does it want to find a lot will be done this? Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, the next question is, yeah. Thank you. All right, thanks for considering an approval on a budget timeline. Thank you, Mayor. It's in front of you. We have a little bit quick, update on a bunch of processes that we talked about. 2023, uh, in front of you is a couple of days. You're up for a restart of the process. Staff works. Forward, start that process and speak all, um, the past month or so. Uh, first, I know my dear would be separate, sorry. Over to that, 2022. Grab, I think. You, uh, after that, you're both giving it. Or. If you, what should be adopted on the number? That's what I'm planning, but I think it's back soon. So, um, hearing the document about what all the impact is, or are we going to be? Uh. So, uh, my question is, you have a waiting three weeks between the public hearing and the adoption of the budget. And I believe in the past, we have adopted the budget statement, public hearing. We go through the budget two weeks before, so it's usually posted on offer first. So at that point, it would have been publicly posted on the website for a number of weeks, and what I'm wanting to do is the detail of three or three hour meeting where we go through the entire budget. And a couple of weeks later, there's probably hearing, I guess, why are we waiting three additional weeks without. That's a good question. I follow the practice that was in the middle of last time. I was being a good part of following. And Sean, is there an issue with going to either way that we can condense it? I mean, I'd like to sure. So there isn't necessarily, uh, that you can't do it on in November. Um, there has been some comments over the years that. People that bring their public comments to November meeting don't get hurt for the current year because they, they're requesting budget adjustments that night. Then we have to delay the make the changes to accommodate those. You have the public hearing. Basically tried again to come two weeks earlier, allows management to potentially, city councils. Preparations, uh, things changes, but it's really not as important that. And you. All right, are there any questions for, around about the timeline?
Just to make sure that it would be very soon the review would be council board and said that. I know I'm bad at hours, but I'm trying to.
Yeah, I have a form that was. I didn't put this in here, but the timeline before I would leave on the. Meeting for a gradient, and what's saying, I don't remember. So last year, we actually decided to start the meeting at six, handle our business first, and then go into the budget part of the meeting. We were done by eight thirty, eight forty five. So, I mean, if, if people didn't have to be work early to be here for four o'clock meeting, and also that it was easy for the public to get here because of evening. So. We made that change last year. I'm, I was certainly able to that. I'm sorry, but I'm trying to keep the agenda short, everything about your meeting twenty. So the handle and then. Everybody getting a comparison.
No, okay, and then, you know, after the.
We did this at six o'clock, yeah. So, I, I, I'm there, and so I'll, okay. So, um, one is stick at the six o'clock we did last year. You're right, in previous years, it had been four to six was going into the budget. And then at six o'clock, we do our regular, uh, council meetings, which, you know, that thing was kind of weird and all, they have a lot of this list, so it's probably a half hour, forty minutes for the. We're coming in at four and we're done by six forty five, so it just made it easier to. All right, so we're going to be, October tenth, then we become council reviewing the budget, so I'm assuming we're going to get it around until the first. Finders, we will post there, okay? And then, uh, and then at the same time, it gets posted on the city website for the public review. And then two weeks after the review will happen, public hearing. Three weeks after that will be done. All right, any questions for staff? All right, so the agenda says consideration and approval, but the network just says this is perfectly. All right, the next item then is discussion about possible improvements at this last week part. Well, since we're on here, it's lovely to hear that we heard this out, all people work, I said, right? Uh, if you guys know, the general. Areas from the mountain side of the state, if I had really. Round here, I just thought I would, very stop at the mountain to maybe add. That is out here, certain stuff, elephants, fire pits, and. The lover, just trying to get people like this about, if people have a. They, I hope that they know our description, uh, a lot of many possible ways to increase value. Um, and what others, what they may do to the lives here in the. Of assets. Well, I'm just holding for a second. All of the meeting one will serve is to leave here before we leave one of the city. You want to just call or write in? All of the reason you want to speak?
You're muted.
Tell me if you're muted. You are muted. All my reasons.
Sorry about that. Uh, just so you, uh, hopefully, I'm, am I coming through clearly because your audio is unfortunately garbled? But, um. The, is this an appropriate time for me to address the council?
Yes.
Okay, as a member of the design team. Uh. We looked into the use of, um. Fire pits in, in the plaza. And that was summarily rejected for safety reasons, simply because of methane gas coming out of the landfill. Granted, the vents have been moved, but that was still for safety factor that was immediately rejected. Uh, the other was televisions. Uh, we also consider because flat screen TVs were coming into vogue at the time of the design. Uh, we looked into that as well, and once again, those were rejected simply for cost factors and prop and potential of vandalism. Uh, so those are the two key items that you're looking at. It's not a bad idea. But those two items had been addressed previously and rejected by the, uh, all parties in the design process. Uh, the only suggestion I could make is take the money that was put into or planned for these and put it into marketing. Uh, Mr. Maslowsky was very hesitant to put a lot of signage out simply, uh, for one reason, the Green Seven was right on the corner. And he didn't want to interfere with their business, so. That's about all I have at the moment for you.
Uh, we only have a text that we have heard here.
I'm sorry?
You stop, uh, addressing the look down. If we do need to ask more, I will say is that it's something we have for a certain. Uh, my question. Uh, where are the television stations? So we proposed that, I think television, one install on the left side, and one is both the right side, so. And outside, or is that, you sit by the fire pits and watch box game, but we're paid for that.
Thank you. It's not so much a question, it's just comments when I saw this come up. And, um. I'm one of those that are on the verge, if you know, you know. Mr. Quaker. So, but, um. One brings the most degrees right there, speaking with the C engineer that was part of the development, because I think my call to do. For one reason, those trees are, because they don't grow down, they grow out, and most worried about the. Cap landfill. And who will be paying for the natural gas or something? You said that thing, but that's for the, um. Thank you for the cap. Also, who will be paying for the natural gas? And, uh, why, why would it make sure that it's all routine? And have we checked into the insurance rates for putting something on like that? Or the, I hope it's about the fire pits, and putting something up in any kind of cap landfill. And, um, I know Mr. Quaker indicated that, um. We really need to check with the D N R. We're here, we saw, saw the waste, suppose like to fill that, since it's here. Again, we talked about the trees over the places that we control, because I know. Frederick and Associates, the Russian corporation, have run into several pockets that were listed on the mass. Building up this property. And seriously, this is actually only putting of the. And we've got to be quite certain how the natural gas would be mentioned, so that it's not going to interfere with any of the. Some of the impacts that we have, and also. If you're going to be moving or relocated in reason, we're not sure where, but. We got lots of rigs when it came to shade, and that's really only the natural shade that was about, uh, not being able to go down anything. And also what we're talking about, I, I'm going to refer to when I'm here for music in the class, because I know. That door is, is online, but it's not open, so in respect to that, it's not involved. And, um. Blindly, if you guys have any kids, put their hands on fire pits, because, uh, other city administrators that. Don't go to a period of, it's behind the possible to have a kid without being supervised, put your hand into the big ground, go on and go get it. He even has some cognitive issues, and I go get it, my sister-in-law has cognitive issue. He went to gas fire to save the team. On how that works. So. And I know she would, so the natural gas, I'm pretty sure the child, I'll check with. These are the special, it's all one of the proper. Fire points are. But again, make sure that, um, proper shot off and, uh. They, uh, time regulation, the time goes along, time when people aren't here. So with respect to the matter of making sure that all parties concerned, because again, I'm very nervous to have a stream, because we were figured out specifically. Because of the type of the way I'm here, uh, you know, I know. Land does. And so the other ones, you definitely have to check, it would be M S O E, and, uh, a lot of people be one of the fields. And so the other ones, you definitely have to check with the MSOE and let people be one of the fields. But this you could hear, we're going to help with the, for your question, I have a. Because when I first mentioned that it's on the agenda and he goes. So I know it's not something that is. Fireworks and safety, but I I am personally having issues because. I just nothing. I'm sorry, I just don't love it because you don't know, especially when I knew there were pockets where they had issues. Throughout the pandemic and so DNR is a big thing, so. And granted, I know I was so old age to the TVs and so they're going to be covered. But it's only covered for one TV because I don't think, just like the film, it shouldn't really be exactly provided. So I have to have those raised by the. Because. I don't know that children with football league will be here. But that's. Thank you.
Maybe if you want to have TV, maybe one of the best. On playing here. That's the city. There's a coming back. For the meeting. I think this is in a world. And he does.
Is this part. Self-funded again?
Any other? So I guess tonight you're asking. You're asking a city of more than four, in more feedback. Do you want us? Do you want us to give you direction about should we put together a more formal proposal? It's informal here, we're not asking for the motion, kind of proving something, just asking to stash the materials. So is that a common with Richard, they can see a more formal proposal? All of the show, they can see a more formal proposal.
I think the idea that the changes of every property, who wants a fire, people have an open property, they will not go to a fire to have it. Because you're there gathering friends, you're not there gathering the kids. You're there to have fun and things to drink and you're staying home to have this time you want to have. So ultimately, I need to see now.
Yes, I'd love to see a more. I think you said that more formal proposal on the direct TV sports package and the televisions. With the possibility of having a nod up here. Where we can actually bring our chairs and go watch games. But along with that proposal, I really want to see as well that the beer garden is going to be able to evolve. The staff. Happen because we're going to invite people to not here and watch gigs, want to make sure that they're also. The purchase professionals. So I I have a little degree on the, I guess, where we would place. These fire pits and there's some of the live images around them. And I hadn't even thought about the issue that the back yes was. And there's that day, we have been they even had to surround this at a park. And I guess we'll consider the area. I do think creating more and more opportunities for people to gather, be able to watch sporting events with families more.
One other thing that they find consider that sort of not fine for background for you. Is they tried to do a splash pad that was next by the DNR because they can't. The piping they had in trench and you couldn't go down far enough. And also the moncler. It's bad enough that we have three storms that are pretty. Possible related, but not the additional. You know, runoff and then splash pad, so that could not be done, so it would be an opportunity, but not why you can't go down in trench.
Would like to see more of the proposal. You need to make sure staff for concessions. I saw you had. For this. It's a personal. It sounds like a sad way. Turned on the shore. Yes, yes.
Self-funded is because I actually feel that this part pairs to one particular group of people. Or. First time people who actually come in here. Because it's not like wondering how we get a. I believe possibly some of the outside. It is easier when they can put the smart one, maybe find something possible to be, but we need to first. What? Who is coming to this park so they can be self-confession. Right now. I don't think anybody comes to this park. I mean, at least in the people that I know. Nobody comes to this park because they don't have kids. Not watching baseball. I might come to some of the. Music in the block, but. The John was even for me, the John was safe play, I would never come in here. Because I don't like it. So I think we need to start. Experiencing what? Or trying to expand who comes and who is welcome into this part. And that may bring another group of people, like, you know, people who just got off work. Who don't have any kids but want to have a practical deal or be here and. Just stay and watch games, that would be different. I mean, so I think that's. That's where my ultimate goal is for this. The line is we don't have to put any money into it. Still concerns about other things, but also don't stop thinking about everything that might worry. Potential people here, this scene hour, don't stop thinking, maybe the. You know, the fire pit doesn't work, what is something else and why? Keep going with your thoughts. And beat the background, one person you can talk to would be the owner of the brass. Battle of the band with that, I think that's what she called it on Sunday afternoons. He did it for one year because it was too difficult to get people to sign. Even on the kids about that, it just, it was difficult.
Alright, the next item on our agenda is we would present the ordinance that would amend schedule E of Title X, Chapter fifteen. And to yield summit at the intersection of Longview Drive and West Port Drive. So they were deciding to do this for us, well, across the five eighty seven sixty six. To install all those two tiles. All available, this forward, I'll be with the board of availability to explain this proposal as well, make a motion. Yes, I would like to first like to. Parents, we were concerned with. Happy birthday, national, and so. People would base it in terms of. All the fact that we've got. Motion to the mayor to approve the ordinance presented as well as the custom five eighty seven. All the science and answer please. Second, I'll be hard to leave the suspicion. All in favor of I? Close now. Eric. Alright, the next item is discussion on the action on a development agreement amendment for illegal business. And are you? Okay. You see, you have a party for the day. Now the agreements are single, sir. And then it's. That case is brother and then it's. Good. Uh, nation of the courts. Okay, following what I mentioned did approve, did sign of the course and the associated. And if there's a question, I know. I have to do this now, you're also here. What lighting of this course impacting residents? A lot of lights, the question, we already have the. So these are all the new lights and they they basically shine straight down, so you drive your body and tell us. Question was actually based on a melee race of the business district, if you want to picture the residents. That was just. Any other questions? A little joke?
Oh, the same one, it means like you play the lights on, the voice throughout to the residents.
So the cutoff time for this, they close at ten o'clock, the lights must be off. Then once again, those lights are competing with right over the paddle. Ports, they shine straight down, they don't shine out. Yeah, there aren't many homes right around here, the nearest residences would be on the other side of Green Bay, there's offices and then condos. Moving up the street on Green Bay on this side of the street, there's several businesses, the carport was there. The nearest homes are. The nearest home are just as close to me as.
It's right, I hear this.
And there's actually significantly not a change. These are actually, these are great ones, they're actually all much. Yeah, that's why I asked. But I'll ask you, that's. Alright, any other questions? Alright, can I get a motion that to approve the development agreement? Well, I'll do a bench second on the. All in favor, I? Close now. Eric. Pass this back over to the fellows for our next item, which is consideration discussion regarding a minor amendment to a planned development district for MMSD. And this is for construction of a temporary. I clean that examination of as the location. Our efforts and then they'll be able to do a rapid temporary structure and how it will still be there that are basically. Everything, people are going to be released back into. So that all the. I take things to be in the pay. Okay, like, so once the temporary facility is done, they will restore the property, replant and trees. And the property are currently positive, but they're in a place that operate the best. That ever name. Therefore, the planning mission will determine whether this is a binder. And to the plan of all of this. To the two thousand and five, there's a new order. I'm aware of it, and it's. One of those sort of. Different controls, I think, so we're going to have it as a product and as a specific. Right there. There won't be any cleaning up of everything will be out in the game. Here in the rain, the over. If you think it's very that long, be able to have it, don't perfectly come over in the winter time, this is creating one of those. So that water can't get in. So that all the cleaning works. So then obviously, they don't want here's anything contamination that's trying to remove. And you don't have to break it and have. Are there any other questions? I think it's a motion to approve this as a minor convention by Andrew. All in favor, I? Alright.
Next, I have one year.
This planned building, strictly small, straight. And they work on the private days. From the interior courtyard of the local bases. And their road with the main dasties that have period of all hours and coasters and United. Definitely this world that I mean. East and north sides. The building there proposing to take out every color of the bay. So essentially, what they're basically thinking of being things that pop off on rip. I'd like to do is every other one, so that would create a little bit more interest. And it looks to me that's. In terms of your architecture, so it'll be a little bit lighter and. It's. Someone being called, giving questions or scattering. Anyone? By the way, Jay actually made it go better. Alright, maybe come to here, I think. Hopefully, the minor amendments. If we go on the government review, it's our second. Second, I'm going to go harder than you for the settlement. All in favor, I? Close now. There is. Alright, my next item on our agenda is I'm going to do the commission committee board's staff reports. That way, if people want to follow up. So I'm going to hand it like to come down to Paul and Shaw to start our commission committee for.
The North Shore Water will be raising whatever it takes at nine AM and. And Rado and Delaney will probably be there for that. And then music in the class, we had canceled last Wednesday due to the weather and it was nice that it turned on sunny after the. Our deadline for cancellation. Our deadline for cancellation, but it was on. That wasn't there for anyone here, but. With all the many home quality, myself, well, getting my ability to make sure of the food. Yeah, we scheduled for next Wednesday for people. And it only hit it because this would have been a third cancellation for a minute or three years, so. We thought third time would be a charm, so hopefully, if it's, I'll do one of those things. Press all. Uh, the last county that I was seventeen with, uh, mission, my advice. And I, I'll let those here, you can go. So here it's down.
No, I'm sorry. I think you're important. I think you're important. According to things reported there, I believe, I'm calling the wire room, everybody's funding. The hurricane. Our area is raining, possible for, was all paid for by fundraisers, it was very successful. How much was, oh, I brought it, but it's not going to be, yeah, it's going to be. And then Tuesday, we had this from my album, I'm going forward. But I, like, maybe twelve. Eyes, but I thought my own, that's people there and appreciated by. The only thing I have inside my Jeep and. If you're going to report. Okay, all right, like, this is our community committee board and staff reports. Um, we are not going to be making any comments. Sorry, for all the. Okay, there may be something to report out of those sessions, but can I get a moment then, uh, for us meeting those sessions out there to the Wisconsin State. Move on my dollar for a second. Check them all on there. All in favor, convene those sessions, please, guys. Close now. We're now in a session. Maybe. Uh, we need to stop the recording and then move any guests to the way. Awesome, we're recording, we're going to start. All right, we have reconvened in an open session. We don't have any getting, I think, the vote on, we have a post session. I'm just going to make it to a announcement for earning that is with recent passing, uh, based on your, uh, Joe's of Cairo. You have it up to me on this. Uh, districts and would like to recommend me. Okay, those things, uh, this commission has a little bit more time on it. Um, because I've been on the A for a while, so we've got a couple of meetings. Also, for seven, okay, so if I can get that filled in the next thing, that would be great. Uh, and I did meet up with somebody about the planning vision, has not responded to them. Us couple, you know, so there may be a, they can see a plan, I mean, you're up of, uh, so. Uh, please try to give the names as possible. I need to get over to Carl by the middle of next week in order to be, uh, be in that, uh, what I'm doing next. Uh, and, uh. I will not be here next evening, my daughter, or that begins, so, uh, run. All right, any other announcements ready to go? Entertain emotions which are. Move on unveiling. Second, on the began, all in favor, this is very sky.